Second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic of America, which I regard indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment? Seeing them. Did the commissioners have a chance to read the minutes from last?
I would approve as presented.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments and committee reports. Jack, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
So, last week I fielded phone calls from constituents that received letters on nuisance violations. So, we talked through that. I'm also working with one that I'll meet with this week on the progress that they're making. Sorry, I didn't have my notes written down. I was working with the Atchison County Extension and visiting with them still on the space that they're looking for. I have invited Martha with Northeast Kansas to a meeting on March 1st to visit with us more in regards to the resolution and what the intent is for for the nuisance violations and helping all the constituents in the county. I've had a call on the wind turbines. And so I will be reaching out to my constituents on that and telling them, just basically hearing from them on zoning. I know that's a red flag word, but it, in all actuality, when you come to try to prevent something from happening in the county, we gotta have some discussions and so that I can represent my constituents in the best manner possible. With that being said, I'm going Chairman or sorry Commissioner Bauer brought up the fact of the sports complex bonds discussion this morning. And just look forward to a public meeting in, we're hoping mid-March, we're gonna finalize the time, possibly hold it at the Memorial Hall in regards to the sports complex in Atchison and Effingham and winding down those bonds and what it looks like and listening to constituent feedback on that. So, other than that, just kind of glancing around at all my papers and notes, that's, that's what I got so far.
I don't have much, but I do want to point out there's a burn ban today. It'll be high winds and as dry as we are, please think before you strike a match. This is nightmare situation when it comes trying to fight a fire in hot windy weather. So, be cautious. Business before the board. First is Wes Leonard. He can't be here today. And he sent a P O for log, log.
Log me in.
Oh, I tried to read too. According to the lettering now, but anyway, this is log me in services for 2022 yearly renewal in amount of $3,479.99. This is a service we've been using for, I think it's four or five years and it's still a preferred service and we was asking for a renewal. Do I hear a motion to renew the service? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. That's Joe Snyder, Roanoke Bridge.
Just we then report for quick sentence ideas.
Yeah, I'd say you all copy the email last week of the 2021.
Was there any questions? On this?
No, it was pretty straightforward for, for me as far as just naming Ken Glover as the Noxious Weed Director and Benny Taylor as the Roanoke Bridge operator when it comes to Noxious Weeds.
I move to approve it as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything else while you're here? Okay. Next is Donna Oswald, but we've got someone representing Donna here for P O. Well, there's two P Os. Can maybe, did any separate motions or can we approve both in one motion?
We can do it together.
Okay. One is in the amount of $2,601.11. The others were $84.96. This is for supplies to basically spruce up the rooms on the third floor for the courts. This would be pointed out of County General Capitol Outlay. Correct. So, do I, is there any questions first of all?
I move to approve.
Been moved and seconded to approve both of these P Os. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll be outside with N. Mike.
Anything on the list?
And then, Jim, do you have a question?
Yes.
So, this is a public hearing closeout for the CDBG grants that Atchison County was awarded. It were awarded somebody to help economic development in the community. And as, as the closeout process of that grant is to have a public hearing. So, in order to do that, we're just gonna read a statement about, about the CDBG and then have any public comment.
Do I need to actually call a public hearing?
Yes, you should.
Okay, I will call and order a public hearing on the amount of the CDBG grant.
Okay. Atchison County was awarded $150,000 CDBG CB3 Economic Development and Micro Grant by the Kansas Department of Commerce that focused on job retention for small, low to moderate income businesses impacted by COVID-19. Businesses where over 51% of employees meet low to moderate income guidelines with 1 to 50 employees. Actual accomplishments of the CDBG CB3 grant consisted of serving five local low to moderate income businesses with various dollar amounts. With the grant, these businesses retained 10 jobs, eight of which were low to moderate income. And then open up for your questions and any comments.
We have any questions?
It has been awarded, yes.
Simon C. HB Custom Printing, Jimmy Stump Removal. I'm going by memory here. Martha's Ditchens.
Sweet.
Martha's Ditchens, sweet. Good job, team.
I remember that if I could have that writing. Great.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I, I just want to say in particular on this grant, I want to say thank you to Justin Frazier at the City of Atchison because he turned us on to this contact. And she was great to work with. Michelle did a lot and put in a lot of time with this Elizabeth Wallace. And in the end, it was great for our local county businesses because we were able to secure that funding and give it to them. So, this was an exciting part of being a commissioner.
Yeah.
Seeing, seeing.
Have to point that out, don't we?
Yeah. Helping.
Any other discussion on this? I hereby close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, we had a couple add-ons. First was we had a a fiscal year 2021 Community Corrections Year In Outcome Report Signatory Approval Form here. This is for Shelley Nelson brought this in and we discussed it this morning and she went over outcomes on their programming and needs the approval and signature of the Chair of the County Commissioners. Do I hear a motion to allow me to sign this outcomes report?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. So, we have a board resolution for Senior Village. And I will read it. Let it be resolved that the Atchison County Board of Directors have authorized Julie Martinez to sign declaration statements. The administrator would be responsible to review the content of the documents and her signature would verify the correctness of these statements. Such documents would include, not be limited to Medicare Cost Report, Medicaid Cost Report, IRS 990 Form, IRS 990 T Form, Kansas Not-for-Profit Corporation Report, and the KDHE Reports. This would be, again, would I, do I hear a motion to allow the chairman to sign this resolution? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, do we have any of the support letters? The first one would be, I'll just read it. Sheriff Jack Lowry, we write in support of your application for funding under the Building a Stronger Economy B A S E Grant administered by the Kansas Department of Commerce. If approved, grant funds would be used for critical upgrades to the Atchison County Jail's fire alarm system and graphic panel. As you have detailed in the grant application, the current alarm sister system is inoperable. The existing graphic panel is deteriorating and is in sore, is sorely in need of an upgrade. These situations create an unreasonable risk to jail staff, to the inmates, and even to the public at large. Installation of a modern system would allow for the integration of the system with other technologies, including CCTV and key fob access for staff. Merging these technologies would greatly enhance the safety of the facility. In the event this proposal is funded, we acknowledge that additional funding by the county will be required for regulatory maintenance to, of the new systems and require the integration with current utility controls and intercom system. We strongly support your proposal and your focus on improving the overall safety to the jail since in sincerity. And that would be Board Chairman. Do I hear a motion to?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. And then we have another letter of support. And this would go to Dear Senator Moran. As the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, we support Northern Worth County's congressionally directed spending request of 1.8 million to implement its County Road 30 paving project. The project will further connect my district's rural agriculture area to the I-70 corridor and the greater metropolitan area. Providing infrastructure to connect agriculture goods and people to jobs that are located in the neighboring county will help in turn to generate higher land and home values adding to our tax base. As many of the county counties in Kansas do, Atchison County relies on its agriculture and residential tax base to provide the community the services that are needed. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded and I believe there's some discussion.
Well, I was just thinking, okay, we're all signing it. I was just, when you read it, it said my, meaning my district. But you were reading it, so I just wanted, but we're all signing it. So, yes, I, that letter of support will be good.
So, okay, should that, we're, we're gonna be changed out of there. We don't, my district or it's, it is a letter of support. So, okay. All in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay.
Other ones for the K dot cost share for the city of Atchison, correct, the unity corridor. So, we should have that.
You don't have it today, you can get it next week. Is there conference?
I think she'll have it today, so.
Okay. Okay, older unfinished business before the board. Do you have something else?
Do you have the Benedictine in there for the bond approval? No, I didn't have that down to put it on there today. Okay, we said last week we would move it over to the day and they sent us the additional information for their 2022 bond request. So, I would like to make a motion to approve up to $7 million for Benedictine College to finish their St. Gabriel Hall as well as their new projects for their real houses.
Since we don't have anything to sign with.
I thought they were bringing it out of the 20 seconds. All right, that's next Tuesday.
I think it is. Yeah, I think that's correct. I think it is set for, for next week. There's a public hearing that has been sat and published for.
Okay, perfect. I just didn't want to hold their timelines up because we put them off. Like, they were ready to get an answer from us last week and we were, so I just want to make sure that they did send us the information and I.
Timely, yes, yes, I appreciated that. So, I just, that's where I was lost a little bit because I know they were on the agenda for next week. So, that will tie for like a second. Just so, I'm trying to do things for both parts. County Council updates. Under, there's the County Surveyor Resolution is on the agenda. Under me. In 2007, our county surveyor would wait links died and the commission appointed Clark Lee and surveying PA, first as deputy surveyor and then as the county surveyor. And Clark Lee and surveying PA continues to be designated as the county surveyor. That corporations owned by Sarah Bay Sarah, who is, lives in Donovan County and she has, well Roger giving background on work that she's done with the county and for the county. She has taken a job working for Midland Survey and has expressed that she wants to first keep being the county surveyor, keep doing the work that she's, that she does at no cost to the county. But also that she wants to close the professional corporation so she avoids the annual fees of keeping it open because I think for the last few years it's been open really just because of us. She had intended to be here. She called me yesterday and she was, she has COVID, didn't sound well. And I suggested that I could discuss this with you and if you needed more information, you can come back and leave. But I don't think there's anything in the least controversial about this. There are, to my knowledge, there, she's the only surveyor that does. It would be interesting to be doing it in the heart of the surveyors. Is that correct?
It's actually almost, there are a couple of surveyors in Atchison County, none full-time in the business that I know of. They all work for someone else. And most of the people who might have, we have had a couple of people who may have expressed an interest, but they want a fee for doing it and she has been doing it gratis except for the payment of the recording fees for for the survey compliance verifications that is, you know, part of the law.
And we have on occasion also favor to do a work that we hadn't done in, I think, three years.
Again, when we run into a, an issue, an issue that requires a surveyor to make a determination, then I call her. She's gracious and responds to those. We submit letters to various different landowners who submit documents that are not within the legal requirements of our county or the state. And when we do that, she graciously signs those and we send them on to anybody that, that their property will be processed. Other than that, we just rarely get billed for anything. And if there was anything substantial we're gonna bring, we're gonna bring it before you. I don't have a budget, so anytime I talk to her, it's like I can't pay you anyway.
Yeah. Commissioners, do you have enough information to go forward with this today? You fine? Jack, are you fine with?
Fine.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. This is number 2022 dash.
Showing 1496, Patrick.
1496. Resolution appointing Sarah J. Bay Sarah as Atchison County Surveyor. Whereas pursuant to KSA 19-1401A, a, the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County may appoint a professional surveyor licensed pursuant to Article 70 of Chapter 74 of the Kansas statutes anointed and amended here to to serve as county surveyor. And whereas through adoption of Resolution 1280 on September 12th, 2007, the Board of County Commissioners apoi- appointed Clark Land Surveying PA as county surveyor, which professional corporation continues to serve in said capacity. And whereas Sarah J. Bay Sarah, the owner of Clark Land Surveying PA and the licensed surveyor associated with said corporation has notified the county that the corporate structure of the corporation may be changing. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas, that Sarah J. Bay Sarah is hereby appointed as Atchison County Surveyor. Be it further resolved that Atchison County Resolution 1280 is repealed. This resolution shall become effective upon publication once an official county newspaper adopted by this Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County, Kansas, this 15th day of February, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. That's the only thing that I have. Sorry, you need for executive session. We, we don't have the other
Not yet.
Other support.
I can double check. She emailed me that we can print about 10 pages and you are not concerned with that. No, I asked you to send it.
Is there any other things to talk about more? We're waiting on the permit.
Um, I'll just bring up the fact that we had two graduates of the National Association of County Leadership Academy recently. So, out of 105 Kansas counties, there were five graduates and two were from Atchison County, which was really exciting. Our Road and Bridge Director, Joe Snyder, and Office Manager, Kim Glover, who is also our Noxious Weed Director. Both of them have graduated from the course and put Atchison County on the map in NACO's eyes. We actually made their monthly newsletter, which was exciting to see, to see Atchison recognized. A conversation I had with Richard Mom as a new commissioner where he suggests getting involved in those organizations, networking, meeting people, getting Atchison County's name out there because it opens us up for opportunities. And I was surprised to read their name in the January newsletter and it's exciting because I feel like them bettering themselves will in turn be twofold sometime for Atchison County was seeing us take part in things like that. And after listening to their recap this morning, something I want to look into taking as well. As far as Atchison Senior Village, we got an update and our census is going up. We have a great group, great leadership with Julie and Anu. They're keeping us up to date on everything happening up there. And I, the commission will be organizing meet and greet for families in the near future to allow everyone to get a chance to meet the, the leadership team for Senior Village and who's making great improvements behind the scenes for our residents every day. So, just kind of flipping through some of the things we talked about this morning.
All right, do you have any questions?
What's the latest on the?
I haven't kept up on it.
I have, I haven't either. And like, so Kansas Association of Counties will send out updates and I always scroll down through and look at all the, yeah, to see if it pops out at me, but I haven't, I haven't seen anything.
I looked a couple of weeks ago, it looked like they had something scheduled for February 3rd or something. That, that looks, I don't know if I was reading it right. It's.
I did read that in the last week, the. I did read that in the last week, the legislature done the override on the boundaries for the districts and they said that took up a lot of their time. So a lot of things that were scheduled were postponed because of them negotiating and doing that work on the congressional districts, which is now being lawsuited against which they anticipated. Two of them, I believe.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are you and Commissioner Quinn receiving the Kansas League of Municipalities newsletter?
I have not gotten one yet.
I have, I usually go through and and try to access what usually is highlighted, which bills are talking about.
Yeah, Mr. Christian Quinn, if you just go to their website, you could sign up for the even the the weekly email.
Okay.
It's, they said out once a week is pretty informative.
I think Representative Epley's newsletter said recently that next week is turnaround week already, which makes is very important. If the bills haven't gotten a place or support by then, I mean, it's kind of, they're they're basically dead.
Next week.
It's either next week or we can, you just referenced it. I just read it this morning and I didn't retain mine.
I might mention the conversation about we had about the Amelia Earhart Highway. I will tell you that Jay Hall sent a letter of support and made a phone call in support of the highway. So I'd ask him to do that. The Kansas Census.
He made, he sent a letter in support to keep it Amelia Earhart?
Yes, and actually called the chairman, so he.
This is a little bit of an aside, but I did see something interesting that would interest Atchison and on the internet, they said Amelia Earhart's original goggle or her headwear is coming up for auction somewhere here like in Chicago. And it had a whole article on it. And I thought, how interesting. It would be interesting to see if they can make it back its way back to Atchison somehow. But that would be a heck of a get, but it's like the bid is thirty thousand dollars already on it. And they had this whole story of how that was given. She was at a function somewhere and it fell off in the crowd and it got lost. She couldn't get it back. Well, some, this guy had it. He knew what it was and he gave it to his fiance at the time. And she kept it in a box in a closet and she'd bring it out just for people. Well, now it's of course, nobody would believe him when they said, well, this was Amelia Earhart's. Well, they actually had a professional organization that verifies it. And they said, yes, it's verified that it's hers. And now it's up for auction. So I just thought that was quite interesting.
Yeah, well, and just faces, didn't he take a pair of goggles? I don't know. And she's been a duckie, you know.
Okay, well, we did get the copy of the support letter we were awaiting and I'll read it. It's to Michelle Needham, Economic Development Programs Manager, Kansas Department of Transportation for the Cost Share Program of Fall twenty twenty one. It says, Dear Project Selection Committee, the Board of Atchison County Commissioners of Atchison County are happy to express our full support for the city's application of funding to support the Unity Street Corridor. Unity Street is a very heavily traveled corridor in the city of Atchison in which local emergency service services travel frequently. The corridor has proven to be a safety factor with limited sources during the evening hours. The proposed enhancements would be a tremendous safety benefit for all who utilize the corridor, both on the roadway and on the sidewalk. The additional lighting and added census security would be very welcome by the college as there are many students who live off campus. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to your decision, Board of County Commissioners. Do I hear a motion to approve this letter of support?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor say aye. Am I missing anything? Or we have a motion to adjourn? At one thirty five? It's been moved in second to adjourn. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.